Good evening and welcome to the Gladstone Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, May 20th at 6:30 PM. Let's go ahead and do you want me to read that one paragraph before?
Yes.
The consent agenda paragraph?
If you if you want to do the.
Let's do the call to order and the roll call, please. And the flag salute.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Yes.
Present.
Commissioner Carlson?
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Brennan?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Present. Let's do our flag salute, please.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a commission member, member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Our agenda is item number one, approval of April 15th, 2025 meeting minutes. Item number two, monthly planning report from April. Three, discussion design review process and updates to Gladstone's municipal code, chapter seventeen point eight zero, design review standards. I would entertain a motion for approval of meeting minutes if somebody would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Smith made the motion and was seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wees?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meeting minutes approved. Item number two, the monthly planning report. Heather?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Not much going on out of the ordinary for April. Pretty typical amount of customer service contacts and building permit reviews. No pre-applications last month, but we do have one coming up for June. The city council did look at the town center this past week and they approved it, but not unanimously. So it does go for a second reading in June and in April, they also approved the FEMA floodplain regulations. So we're all compliant with that and actually anticipate a potential submittal on that in the next couple of months. Any questions on the planning report?
And may I ask why it wasn't approved unanimously?
The commissioner or councillor LeBonte has reservations about increasing density within the town center boundary. So decided to vote against the it wasn't the boundary itself. I think it was the town center overall. So yeah, he he put his objections on the record of what his concerns were and the council discussed it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I guess we're going to start the discussion of the design review.
Yeah, but let's do that. And it has morphed a little bit in the time I've been looking at this process because of the definition for limited land use review. So we'll talk about that, too. There's plenty about design review in here, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, too. So we'll cut a slideshow. I wanted to start with the zoning map. I I don't really need to talk about it right now. It comes up again in the slides. I just was struggling for an image that I wanted to use for the front. So there's our zoning map. So I wanted to just hit briefly on the definition of a limited land use review. And it is the on the bottom of this slide, it lists what limited land use reviews are. So design review subdivision, expansion, alteration, or extension of a non-conforming use. All of those are currently in the code scheduled to come before the planning commission for a public hearing. Lotline adjustment is is a staff level decision and we process those administratively. Partitions, it depends if they are straightforward partitions that meet dimensional requirements. They are processed by staff. If they were if they include a flag lot, they come before planning commission. And we've had one of those before. So right now, all of these land use types are under the current law that has recently changed. All of these now are processed as staff level reviews. So it is more than just design review. So at the top there in the yellow is the key piece of the legislation that changed, saying that a city shall apply the procedures in this section of ORS 197195 and only the procedures in this section. So previously, this portion that's in italics was not in the ORS. So cities were using discretion and saying, okay, we see that you have these standards for what we need to do for notice and things, but we're also going to go ahead and have a public hearing on it and have public testimony. So what the legislature tightened up was saying now you have to follow only these procedures. And that has to do with noticing property owners within 100 feet of the site at least 14 days before the decision is made. You have to write a notice of decision with findings for all the applicable standards, which we already do. And then appeals may come before the planning commission. So that is it for the ORS 197195 procedures. So that's all we can really apply to limited land uses. So I want to make sure that our applicable standards are really clear and are what the planning commission city council want to see applied when staffs are doing this.
Do we know why the state of Oregon decided to change this law?
They're trying to reduce barriers. They're trying to make things quicker and easier and less expensive to develop land that should be subject to standards that are so clear that anyone can know if they meet those standards, they can get a permit approved.
I hear what you're saying, but I've given this a lot of thought and I have some serious concerns. I know we probably can't do anything about it, but I do think. I'm trying to choose my words carefully. I think it's important for citizens of a city to have a voice and to be able to help make decisions about the future of the community, the community they live in. And this does not represent that. And I I'm speaking only for myself, but I, you know, it's like giving someone due process. I think they should have a right to come and state why they want to do this. Every city and community is a little bit different. And I believe this city is as well. And there's a lot of citizens that want to have input on what their city is going to look like 100 years from now. And I, I'm just going to say this, I don't always trust the decisions that the state makes. Case in point, tolling. They don't care how it's going to impact the city, the citizens. They don't care. It's just about money. So I I I know that there's legalities to this, but I really, moving forward, want to see a work session, a consortium, something where other city planners are together saying, wait a minute, hold on. There still needs to be some of this there. They're just trying to push it on through without hearing what the citizens who pay the property taxes and their salaries want to see done with their cities. So I I don't know how any else, anyone else here feels about this?
I would be in complete support of what Chair Smith just mentioned. I remember a long ago, marketing class in college where the professor said to the effect that if you try to design a product or service for everybody, you will fail because you have to know your audience and know what what they want out of a product or service to effectively present one. One size fits all. There's always trade offs in in various places. And I I I know Chair LeBonte from working with him for a couple of years and in his his feelings about Gladstone, why they may be unique. He was, he's well known about that. He wants to say in what the city looks like. And I think every citizen and person at this day is would say the same thing.
I know that's why I got involved is because it's important, whatever is decided based on the county, state, whatever level is going to impact this community. There's so much history here and so many assets. And I have deep concerns. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would echo what Chair Smith says. I think that the citizens in Gladstone are entitled to have their input considered and what goes on here. And I think the the planning commission itself is entitled to at least assist them with that.
I'd also say that I'm a little bit disappointed in our state senator and representative that they didn't make this known directly to the city, what was in what was going on and what was in effect. I realize we're, you know, if this is a pointless argument, but I feel better having said so.
I don't know if it's pointless. I think we need to get together with other planning commissions and say, how do you feel about this? How do you feel it's going to impact your city?
I think it starts to with the staff report that we put together with the changes that we make. We can voice these concerns in that staff report. We can have the ability to say, planning commission feels that this is removing, yes, strongly feels that this is removing some local input that is necessary to the design and construction of the city. You know, we'll work on that and make sure that we have that as part of the packet that comes before you.
At this point, I want to hear everyone's input on the commission also. Go ahead. Were you going to say something, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, if this is meant to speed the process up, and I defer to Commissioner Langston on this, who's in the construction business. I have an idea that that the slowdown in processes at county level in the permitting process, not here. We we get something and we almost universally approve them. Once in a while, there'll be a setback. So they might have to wait a month. But if you listen to people, if you listen to people in his business, they always complain about the permitting process for the people that issue them. And that's where the slowdowns are, seem seemingly are.
Mr. Carlson?
I'm aligned. I agree with all. I also, too, as somebody who doesn't check their mail every day, sometimes every week, look at this and say, you know, if I were living 100 feet within some of the sites that would be impacted, there's a really good chance I would miss any notice or anything. And so even with that, I just the the process leaves some room for improvement.
I just one more thing. Sorry. I feel like standards, no matter how objectionable they are, will always be subjective. And there will always be some sort of small loophole to nod adhere to them. If that makes sense.
It does. Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
I just feel like no matter how clear and objective we make everything, it it may not make a huge difference.
Again, I go back to just, you know, it's due process. Sometimes it may seem laborious, but you can't make shortcuts and expect a good long term impact for a city. Commissioner Volbada?
Yeah, no, a lot of thoughts. I am also aligned. I think one of the great things about having a commission full of people of various backgrounds is that we're able to take our different education and experiences to benefit on behalf of the the city, of the people that we we serve, right? And so with codes that may be a year old, maybe 12, 15 years old, you know, having having a commission up here to be able to kind of dig through them and and make them make sense for this day and age, I think that's incredibly valuable. And so I'm, I guess I am curious about what we're required to do to adhere to the state and then what we can do to best prepare to to make sure that, you know, whatever codes we have in place are up up to code. And then also maybe setting in place, you know, an annual review to make sure that anything that does change as loopholes do come up, that we are continuously, you know, having having the input that we are up here to have.
Commissioner Wees?
I I think you'll know I've cited on having a hand on the wheel or keeping some control on this and and the city council level numerous times over the past few years. I do think the concerns are well noted and I think it's it's good to get those out in the open. I also think, you know, trying to focus on the work ahead and understand that as these decisions come down to the staff level, that that really does free up some time as we meet together to really get into chapter 17 and really focus. And and I'm thinking already of the ways that, you know, maybe that's each week we look at the things that were approved a few months back and go back and look through and see, is there anything that seems like off about that development and that we want to revisit in the code and just how how we can focus more on chapter 17 and making it a clear and easy staff level decision that stays uniform with what what we'd like to see in the city.
Commissioner Wees, did you see my PowerPoint already this evening? I feel like we are on the same page right now. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 that's fine.
Yeah, we do have examples from previous design reviews to look at this evening, as well as lots of sections of title 16, or 17, excuse me.
Yep. No, I I I think I agree with with everybody up here. You know, I I think, you know, the the biggest concern is just someone utilizing a piece of a parcel in a manner that doesn't really fit with what we're doing or what we, you know, what our our community is like. You know, I I'd probably say most of my opinion would be more like in a commercial setting. I have a kind of a hard time residentially if someone buys a piece of land and they're they're looking at the code. And based on my background, you know, you can go through the code and you know your design parameters and you can construct the building within those those parameters. And they're pretty, you know, well spelled out. You can't build a five story home in the middle of a neighborhood. So someone's not going to build big arbitrage in the middle of your neighborhood and block the sun. So I I have faith in what the code has set up. And I I would have a hard time telling someone who worked hard and purchased a piece of property and and want to build something for their family and their legacy and to tell them no, because someone doesn't like it, that that's kind of a tough sell for me. But, you know, I I do think looking at commercial space and the downtown area should be under consideration, what the intent of of a structure is going to be and and making sure that it meets that those parameters.
I still, I I still think it would be, it would behoove Clackamas County if all of the cities within Clackamas County at least had one work session regarding all these new changes. I would like to see that happen. And if it's something that I can help facilitate, I would love to do that. I think it's very important because as their, as the governor is pushing so hard for housing and building, and I work for a plumber, you know, so I know what's going on out there in the industry right now to provide additional housing. Clackamas County, a majority of it is rural. And I hope that I want to have faith, but it's tough. Land is one of the the biggest treasures that you can have. That's highly valuable. And I think moving forward with development and building, if you don't watch the big dog closely, you're going to end up with a result that you're not happy with. And I do feel very strongly about that, especially for Gladstone, because in the past, you know, just look at the way the city's played it out. I mean, you've got commercial properties right next door to a house and thus forth. There's, there's going to have to be some exceptions pertaining to some situations. I don't know how we'll work through that or get that set up because the, like Commissioner Smith said, this is not one size, one size fits all. You've got a farm home. You've got this. I mean, we're very intermixed. I I would just like to know the true motivation as to why the state wants to do this, other than to hurry up and build more houses and then have half of them sit empty because people have no way to finance the homes. So not everything they mandate is good. I still believe that compromise is better, especially when they, you know, cut out all the parking requirements for building. That's going to be a problem down the road, probably in the next five to 10 years, really a serious problem. And I just don't think there's forethought into what the future holds. Don't worry about it, but you have to when you're developing. So I hope your presentation comes to mind, but yeah, I'm deeply concerned about this. I I'm not comfortable with what they're proposing at all.
If I could, one quick, I would encourage my colleagues here to contact State Senator Mark Meek and Representative Hartman and let them know that you're not pleased with this. It's not that we personally needed to be consulted, but as a city. And this one size fits all. I'm betting building height regulations in Lake Oswego, Westland, Oregon City, Gladstone, Milwaukee, and Happy Valley very greatly. What's allowed? I think we have 50 feet here, isn't it?
No more than three stories, yeah.
More than three stories. And I know in Lake Oswego, they have buildings taller than that.
Five and six, yes.
It it just, it's, it's an accident looking for a place to happen.
Yeah. Don't mean to be a bummer, but it's.
Bet you're sorry you asked the question.
Not at all.
No.
I took notes and I'm going to work it in.
I guess what I'm trying to say, too, is is that I want to do this correctly so that and it's not about loopholes. It's about the consistency of this city's future. And that's why I think it's important that the planning commissions get together. And I want to know how to do that. I mean, does it go through you guys? Do we contact the senators and say, we think this is important because it's going to impact Clackamas County greatly, including our little, when you look at the most of the history in the state of Oregon, it was in Oregon City, Gladstone, Westland. And that needs to be preserved. It needs to be nurtured. If they can do something with Lament Falls like they want to do, I think it'll be great because it'll bring visitors. I just see serious impacts to what they're trying to push through, serious detrimental. And you'll have to spend millions of dollars to undo the mess. So I I definitely want to know how I can get this set up to, I want to meet with the other planning commissions. Because if we're not comfortable with this, I can't imagine they are. So and if someone from the state needs to come and meet with us, that would even be better. Because there is going to need to be exceptions to some things. So now please go ahead.
I, yeah, thank you. I don't, I I don't communicate with the planning commissions in Clackamas County on a regular basis, but I do communicate with planning directors in the county. So I can definitely bring this up with other planning directors and see what they're hearing from their commissions, that sort of thing. Have the conversation at the level that I'm at. Your city manager, your city administrator, it meets with other folks in the county as well. So I I know these conversations are happening.
They are? Okay. So it's not just us?
Oh, no, I mean, I don't know if if I mean to say everybody's upset or everybody feels that this is a certain way, but that people are talking about it, like this is new. This is something everybody's grappling with. Everybody, I found out last week Gladstone's, you know, one of the first Clackamas County cities to finalize their FEMA code language. People are still grappling with that. So people aren't even to this yet because they're still working on their floodplain. Westland doesn't have their town center adopted yet. So they're still working on their FEMA and their town center. So we're a little ahead.
And that's large and large part to you. Thank you.
Well, so you may not be hearing it a ton from colleagues if you are at trainings for planning commissioners and things that might be not at this level just yet. But the conversations are definitely happening, happening at the staff level.
Okay. Tammy? Is this something that you can talk to Jackie about?
She is out of the office the rest of the week, but I can follow up with her on Monday to, or Tuesday, yes.
And I will reach out also to the two senators because I think we need their help as well. It's not that I'm saying that none of this is good. It's just anytime you have a city and you give control of the state to dictate what you do. I don't know about you guys, but. Pushback. It's like, no, 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 no. Would you please proceed? I didn't mean to be a wet blanket on your presentation.
I think Commissioner Carlson has something.
Yeah. And for me, it's more just questions, just again, since I'm new, you guys are sick of hearing that. But at this, at this point, this stands though, correct? And this will stand.
That's correct. So this is currently the law and it took, it came into effect on January 1st of this year. So any design review subdivision expand, you know, any of those things on the screen that are submitted need to be processed with a staff level review.
Okay.
Being you.
Being me, yes.
And one thing I was kind of thinking about in this, you know, as I was just kind of reading through just our current design review, you know, standards and stuff. I also work with a, like, I work in nonprofit, so I work with the board. And every time we have people rolling off, one of the things I talk to them about a couple of months before they roll off is I say, you know, this now is the time for you to formalize and communicate what you want your legacy or what you or what you wanted for the our organization for future boards. And I was kind of reading, as I was reading the our our standards, I was thinking about that is if they were written 10, 15 years ago, what is it that the people in the planning commission or in the city wanted for us? And that was kind of one thing I thought, though, too, is as we're, so this we can't change right away. So in the meantime, can we really work to say like, what is it that we want for Gladstone? And make sure to also, if this doesn't change, then people aren't going to have a voice. So can we also, as we're, as we're kind of working through this, find out a way to make sure that the city has the voice, too?
Citizens, yes.
Yeah, yep. So and that was just kind of, I have no ideas for that. I just wanted to kind of put it out there.
I'm going to speak out of turn. I'm looking at Tammy here, but I think the city is working on some more public outreach material. Not in place yet, but moving forward, looking to do more social media posts, things like that. So certainly, you know, the city has those, they have a website, they have Instagram, they have other ways that they can say, hey, planning commission's working on this. They're going to have a hearing on this. We, you know, come out and tell us what you think. Here's what we're thinking about. So there, there are avenues to do that beyond the code required, like put it in the newspaper and tell DLCD about it that we can do. And I can help city staff with that as well.
Then I'd be willing to, if there's any need for help with that, just, I don't want to speak, but just sit and listen to better understand what it is citizens want to. I'd be happy to do that.
And that's the beauty of this community. You get a lot of input.
Those people care.
Yeah, they do. They're invested here. And it has been for, you know, some of the old timers, you know, their great grandparents, you know, homesteaded here and it's just, and they've all stayed. Or if they've left, they've come back. So, yeah, I like that about legacy. I think, well, I just, I'm old enough to remember things that have transpired. And it's like, oh, boy, that was a mess. You know, what a waste of time, but.
Well, let's fix some of those. Let's talk about where we can make some changes.
By no means, is this a reflection on anything you've done. It's just, yeah.
Oh, no, I I know I'm the messenger.
Well, you know, and you're right. Our senators should have last fall said, hey, by the way, this is on the docket. We're going to be talking about this. It's probably going to go up for vote. And that's when we should have acted. I knew nothing about it. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, I I really think this was part of a big package of housing legislation, but the way the ordinance was written or the the legislation was written, it applies to all design reviews. I think the intent was for housing, but it was applied more broadly in the way the language is adopted.
Well, it's, it's one of her top five agendas. The governor is about housing.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's probably number two on her list.
Yeah.
To be quite honest. And so I get that, but you still can't put the cart before the horse.
Right.
Okay. Now that I've gotten that out, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
And there's, there's a lot of.
Thank you for the support of the commissioners.
There's a lot of words on a lot of these slides and not all of it is for reading. It's for reference if we want to talk about certain things. But for this one, and this was in the packet that I put together for you, that I made a few upfront recommendations just to make sure that we're still keeping some of the integrity of the process. And one was to keep the pre-application meeting. That's something in a lot of communities that if you have a staff level review, you don't necessarily need to have a pre-application meeting. But I really like it in Gladstone because it forces the application. the applicant and me and our city um public works director and the public works team to really work through the issues upfront and make sure that when we're in the process of reviewing the land use, we've talked about any large problems. So for example, right across the street at the fire restoration, um, the uh, there were some like ADA concerns with the curb, and we were working through that from the pre-app stage. So by the time we got to planning commission, it was like almost an afterthought, like yep, we have a plan for that. We're, we're not conditioning it and not knowing if it's feasible, right? So, um, I wanna recommend that we keep the pre-application meeting, we don't have to.
No, I, I, I think that's best. I think that way it, you let them know upfront what is needed in order for this to get approved.
Yeah.
There's a lot of moving parts to it.
And we produce notes, the public works department and the planning department produce notes after those. And if, if it's something on McLaughlin, ODOT produces notes, so they have in writing the path forward for all the um foreseeable issues and things that we've discussed. Um, we do need to do a, kind of a clear and objective brush. I completely agree with you, Commissioner Brennan. I, you and I could read the same code section and apply it four different ways. So I, I agree, I don't think there's ever gonna be a completely clear and objective code. Um, but we need to do the best we can and continue iterating it, like Commissioner Volbita said, check back in, did that make sense?
And that's where I don't want the human element to get lost.
Yeah.
Here.
Absolutely. Um, so currently, we don't require any kind of construction management plan, but that's come up on several of our projects where we just wanna make sure that people are thinking about the impact to the neighborhood when they're actually constructing. So I'd like to add that as a, just a general condition that we require those um before you get your building permit or public improvement plans, before you start working on the site.
Well, there'll be um a list of things like, you know, how they dispose of certain things, impervious services, uh surfaces, and not letting chemicals leach into the groundwater, that kind of a thing.
Um, so there could be, the, not letting chemicals leach is probably under their erosion control permit. That's already being overseen by Wes, but we um could definitely have a list because the things I've heard come up in the past are like traffic control, right, signage, um safety, things like that. Hours of operation, um, just have like a plan that you're submitting to the city, like this is what it's gonna look like. So that if um a neighbor comes in and says, wow, they're really making a lot of noise over here, you can say, well, here's the plan, here's what's been approved. And then if they step outside of that, you're able to say, hey, you're not following your plan.
Not only that, um, it's important, if they don't have secu- onsite security, that when they leave the job site, they have a fence or something, or they make sure that there's no tools. Nobody wants to get into an argument about, you know, who's gonna replace all these tools or materials.
Yeah, safety and security of the site. Great, um, yes. And then the final one bullet point that I put in is because um when we look at um design review applications, we don't have a clear pathway to require that public utility easement along the frontage of some properties. We have it clearly written in our subdivision and partition code, but we don't have it clear in our design review code. So we've been having a hard time getting those. Um, and of course, that only works in areas where you have a front yard of some sort along Portland Ave or places we have zero lot lines. You wouldn't apply that because the building's all the way up to the front lot line. Um, but where we can require the public utilities, and I just wanted to add that requirement, so it's easier to implement. Yeah.
Can utility easement still be applied on all lot lines?
On, s- so, can you?
Like, say, an easement could encompass like the entire, like circumference of a lot, is that still possible, or?
Um, I guess it would depend on what the easement's for. Um, this would be like along the property's frontage, like say eight feet back from the sidewalk, everything within that distance. And that's so that um the city or a private contractor like PGE or Northwest Natural could come in and dig up their line in your front yard and have the ability to do that, and you wouldn't have anything built in that area. Um, but I don't know if you could put an easement over your entire property.
Yeah, it's all gonna be where you're, where you're running your uh infrastructure. You wouldn't, I mean, I, I wouldn't think they would run from one street through people's yard over to another street.
And if it's for access.
No need for.
Sometimes you share access, so if you have like a shared driveway, you might have an access easement on a neighboring property. Um, but it's rare that the entire lot would be encumbered by easements, because techni- typically, an easement is somewhere you wouldn't wanna put a structure.
Yeah.
So you would render the lot essentially unbuildable. Oh, you do see it if you have like a natural area and you might have like a stormwater easement over the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then you're preserving it for stormwater drainage and treatment.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then I just threw the note in the bottom so we could keep in mind that with the town center being tentatively approved, it's gonna be approved fully in se- in um June, that once it's effective, all properties on C two in the city will be subject to our downtown core overlay standards. So there's already really specific building and site design, window requirements, set the parking back, landscaping. Um, so anything that's zone C two, so anything along Portland Avenue really has pretty prescriptive vetted design review standards. So we just keep that in mind. So when we talk about design review for non-residential, we're really talking about McLaughlin. Um, you know, any remainder parcels here in industrial or potentially along eighty second. Um, let's go to, so here were some thoughts that I put into the packet, just things that I put forward for your consideration, and I break these up into individual slides, so we don't need to go through all of them, but um, just, let's go individually. So building materials. Right now, we say that you can have um metal on, um, in certain circumstances, which is the portions of the building that are not visible from a road or adjacent property. Structures no greater than two hundred square feet uh in area and ten feet in height, utility, equipment and cabinets and canopies and awnings and that sort of thing. Um, so one thought I had, which is, oops, here, is to include um, maybe up to twenty-five percent on public streets to have some, I know with the um Wong's Building Supply, they had like a metal um element to the front of their building that seemed okay. Um, I don't know, if you, or we can leave it only the portions that are already in place. And then if you wanted to go beyond this, you could come in for a variance to the planning commission. So like, or like a separate design review, I don't, I don't know what wording we would use, but like a enhanced design review, I guess. Um, we can do that, we can leave certain pieces of it. If you wanna do something different than what the code allows, you can come through a public hearing process. Does anybody have any thoughts on metal on buildings? We can come back to it, too.
There, I do know that there's different, how do I? There are things that have come before us that were metal, that actually looked like siding or stone, something decorative. They weren't the, you know, old fashioned corr- corrugated metal like you'd see on an army base or something. So I don't know if they have different definitions that you might wanna spell out clearly, because the, the builder, the building type stuff that they have out now, that's metal. Just as some of it, you can't even tell it's metal.
Yeah, or it's.
You know what I'm saying? I don't know what they call that.
Or it's done in a way, or, or it maybe is a small amount of corrugated metal, but it's, it, it's in addition to like wood and steel and other type of things that look.
And, and it's part of the design.
Part of the design, it gives it that industrial chic look.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
I don't know what they call that, where it's the metal, like, in fact, they used it at the building up and, well, they've used it right at uh, at the new, um, right next door to us, not the police office, but the, um.
Oh, Public Works.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's metal.
Yes, yeah. And that was an existing metal building, right, that was added to, or was that?
That whole, the siding outside is all new.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it wasn't a, maybe it was a metal building, I'm trying to remember.
I think it was metal before, yeah.
Okay.
But they've made it look so much nicer.
Exactly, that grade of metal is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look and see if there's some examples of how to um architectural, no, um, not architectural.
I don't know what it's called.
I'll look and see if there's a definition, but any thoughts, Commissioner Volbita, do you come across this?
Like, through spec books out, the only thing I can think of is like, is architectural metal panels.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paneling.
Oh, metal panels, yeah, that might be the way to do it, because then you're not doing like a, you know, a full metal wall, okay.
I think that's probably pretty accurate, architectural panel, metal panels, okay.
Okay, that's great. I'm gonna note and look that up and see if I can find language and other codes that use that.
Yeah, because Public Works for the small investment they put into it, I think it looks really, really nice. It's a building.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Um, I missed one before we got to metal. I was going to throw a couple of ideas about exceptions from design review um for you. So currently, we do have a few exceptions. Um, things like playground equipment and a park have an exception from getting a design review. Um, anything residential that's um smaller than multifamily has an exception. So, um, you know, your triplexes, duplexes, single homes. Um, a lot of things do require design review, though, like next door, we did do the canopy for, over the picnic table for the break area for Public Works. Um, and so just throwing some ideas out there that if there are building or site additions of less than two hundred and fifty square feet, and this is out of the Milwaukee Downtown Code standards, they don't require a design review if it's less than two hundred and fifty square feet and not visible from streets, sidewalks, or public parks. So basically saying like you could do a small improvement to your site that's existing. And as long as it's not visible, we don't need to put it through design review, just get a building permit for that.
Like a shed out in the backyard.
Yeah, or the cover of the Public Works picnic table. Um, and then the other thought I had, because I've been talking with um Public Works and, and city administration about um the nature park and that there's a pathway planned for that. And there's a, there's an adopted site plan for each of the city's larger parks that has what kind of elements um the Parks Board and the City Council and public involvement has um agreed to. So if we wanted to streamline that process a little bit and save the city some time and money, we could allow improvements to city parks consistent with the approved site plan. So we don't need to do a separate design review if you've already gone through the process of approving it with the site plan. So I think it's specifically Gladstone Nature Park, Meldrum Bar. Um, do we, is there?
Max Patterson.
Max Patterson, yeah.
Charles Ames.
Yeah, so if there's already a plan to, so it, it's basically taking it out of planning commission and putting it in the Parks Board to say that you should decide what should happen at a park. And then we'll just accept that what you put together into your plan is something that we wanna just move through the process.
What do you guys think? I think it still should come before the planning mission.
Well, so it, it, it wouldn't, it would go to staff, right? So there's not the planning commission element anymore, there's the design review element. So we'd still be taking it through at a staff level. So it'd be like now the staff being able to say what was designed for the park is consistent with what's being proposed. I guess my level of concern is low and my confidence is high that if the city is the entity creating the plan, then they're the ones proposing on it. That if there are small alterations, it's value engineering, or it's something that meets the community's needs. Um, because, so I guess because it's the same applicant, I don't have concern with that. If it was a pri- or even if it was school, because we're not the school district, right? That I'd wanna make sure that what the school district's proposing is insistent with what the city's requirements are. But since the city is proposing the parks, I'm less concerned. It's a considerate, it's something to think about.
And what happens if it doesn't align with the approved site?
Then they need a design review.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then they just automatically.
Yeah, like, oh, you said you were gonna have three picnic shelters and a trail, and you're proposing a swimming pool, bring it on in.
Yep.
We're gonna need to have a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, and that probably would, um, I think that would probably fall into conditional use, which that does come back to you. So there are still, and, and that speaks to, I think it was you Chair Smith who mentioned, um, you know, making sure that there's a use that's next to an appropriate use, or that there's conditions in place to make sure it, it works. And that is the conditional use process. If there's something that, you know, is, is kind of okay in a zone, but not like really okay, maybe if we put some conditions on it, those are what are listed as our conditional uses. So then those do come to this body.
How often are the park site plans redone or changed?
It's not yearly, I know that.
Oh, no, yeah, I think once they're in place until they're built or a significant change happens, they would stay in place. Um, you know, like all planning documents, parks, so parks master plans typically have like the, all the parks of the city and all the recreation facilities, but those individual site plans are an element of that. And those are twenty-year documents, just like our comprehensive plan or our housing needs analysis, those types of things.
Codes and ordinances, yeah.
Yeah. We definitely update our development code more often than we do a lot of those other documents.
And maybe it, if we stick with that, I, I, I kinda like that, is just trusting that they're following the site plan. But then also maybe too, if there are, if there is a time when maybe they wanna revisit plans or rethink about something, it could be an opportunity for Parks and Rec and Planning Commission just to get together.
Yeah. We could always invite them to a meeting at some point.
Mm-hmm. Especially if if this is, now you said it would be on a staff level, right?
That, yes, so any design review that doesn't require a variance or a conditional use permit would be staff level.
Yeah.
That's right. Um, okay, so we'll think more about metal and how we word it to make sure we're talking about the architectural panel style metal. So let's talk about, so you don't have to read all of this, but um, our code has a general building sighting and design standard for um energy efficiency, compatibility, and um how to cite the building, so um maximizing east-west street length. Um, making sure that you're using um windows with a southern exposure, that sort of thing. Um, this language is, is good language, I think, but it's not all clear and objective. It says things like, um, we're practical um to the greatest extent, feasible, those types of things. And um, so I do think if we wanna keep this language, maybe we consider moving it to the non-residential design standard. So maybe we say that um if a multifamily development came in, we wouldn't worry so much about these specific criteria for that, but we would still wanna apply these if something came in that's non-residential. So we did apply those standards for the fire um, building that's coming in next door, which we'll show in a minute. I know um Commissioners Carlson and Brennan weren't here for that. Um, but we did require some additional um ventilation and windows and things like that with those to comply with those standards. And then here we have ground floor windows and distinct ground floor windows. Um, again, this is required of anything that's like in the C three zoning districts, and so it'd be nice if I had that zoning map handy, let's see. Um, so we, I, I put in these slides just to show that this is, um, the town center encompasses all the C two, you'll see some C two back behind the um, the legend, but that's not C two anymore. That's uh Gladstone Nature Park, and we rezoned that to open space. So really, the only C two in the city was um along Portland Avenue, and then this little tiny bit in Arlington that we encompassed into the town center. So all, all of that is gonna be subject to our downtown overlay standards, that have specific design standards. So then what we're really talking about is um anything industrial, which there might be a little bit of um developability right here near City Hall across the street. Um, the area um on the other side of the highway, uh I two oh five, that's industrial. Um, you know, this is technically, I think, Office Park, the Seventh Day Adventist site. So if that ever redeveloped, we'd wanna make sure we were applying some design standards there. Um, and then of course, our C three that's along eighty second and along McLaughlin, and even a little bit of um industrial here along McLaughlin, but that also is an auto dealership. Um, and then there's the MR, so if we got a new multifamily or something in the orange properties, then that would be something uh we could apply our, our design standards to as well. Um, and then up here, we have a pre-app on it, there's a tiny, this is the only C one property in the city. Are you guys getting my cursor too? Yeah, so it is a daycare, it was a daycare childcare center, and it's being proposed for a childcare center again.
Yeah, the Y, the Y.
Yeah, yeah. So now Clackamas County um kids is looking to, to redevelop that into a childcare center. Um, that's our only C one, and then everything north that's not showing is our um seven point two, which is not subject to design standards because it's the um. which is not subject to design standards because it's the um, single family and uh, middle housing that doesn't require design review. Um, so just to, as a reminder of context, we're, we're in a pretty limited area of the city with what we're talking about. Definitely along McLaughlin and eighty second. It's kind of the, the two.
And I don't believe we have any area that we could annex.
No, I don't believe so either.
This is it.
Yeah, well, annex, though, we do have a little bit of property adjacent to us that's in unincorporated Clackamas County of like individual home sites that want to annex potentially to get off septic and things. We have an application in for that. Um, but as far as UGB expansion, there was um, recent legislation passed by the state for housing that said, um, you know, if you want to do a small UGB expansion and you have the ability to do that, um, we're gonna really reduce the process for that. So we, we looked at it, but we didn't find anything that would suit Gladstone for expanding our UGB. So, yeah, this is pretty much it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, so back to the non-residential. Okay, so any thoughts about moving um, compatibility, energy efficient design and citing over to non-residential only? Or concerns with that?
What would be the benefits of moving it?
We wouldn't have to rewrite it. It it has to be clear and objective to apply to residential. So as written, I wouldn't be able to apply like one because where there are no conflicts with other design standards, that one, I mean, maybe that's clear if I look at every single other design standard and make the finding. But um, to maximize solar access, where practical, um, we're not allowed to use where practical. And then using such techniques as, um, and that's easy to change, but it would just need to be updated to say using one of the following. And it would have to be a list. It can't have a, you know, or something similar.
It can't be vague. It has to be very.
It can't be vague, yeah.
Okay.
So we could rewrite this and apply it to residential. The, the, the citing in relation to um, energy efficiency and the way light happens. That comes into play a lot more when you're on like a larger lot, right? So um, you want it, when you have a building and a parking lot and space to do all that, then it makes sense to do it properly. But most lots that we see here in Gladstone, they're like, you can either build them east, west, or north, south. There's really not a lot of opportunity. Um, that's not to say that they, they're not useful standards. Um, and we can certainly keep them in regards to non-residential or update them and keep them for all design review.
Uh, so that would be on top of like the typical, this, this uh, requirements on top of like your typical building code with
Oh, yes.
Insulation standard and.
Oh, absolutely. Yep, this is totally separate.
I feel like I agree with what you're saying. Uh, uh, applying this to non-residential makes sense to me. You know.
I'd like to see it for both.
That's uh, I mean, the, like, like she was explaining, it's, you're, you're very limited in, in a lot space uh, to try to accomplish any of these items.
I hear what you're saying, but how does that apply for a lot that wants to add an ADU?
Well, yeah, see again, you know, uh, that's, that ADU might be running, you might only run north to south and.
And ADUs are not subject to designer view.
Yeah.
They are straight to building permit.
And you only have so much space to.
Yeah, they're, they're just subject to the setback standards and height. And and currently, we have compatibility standards in ADUs too.
Yeah. I know, I was, I was present when we were working on that and we all had concerns that it would look like hodgepodge and our neighborhoods would start looking shabby.
So if I'm understanding correctly, if we move this to the commercial section, then it applies to all commercial buildings. If we keep it here, sorry, non-residential, if we keep it where it is and rewrite it to be clear and objective, then it would still apply.
To homes.
To homes.
Resident.
We could potentially put a number on.
And only to multifamily homes.
I was gonna say.
Right? Cause nothing is happening. We can't do any design review for single family homes, uh, middle housing. So any of our duplex, triplex, quadplex townhomes. So we're really talking, when we're saying residential design review, we're really talking about apartments and condos.
So we could potentially leave it where it is and put a, a number, a unit number or something on uh, the applicability, right? Doesn't.
Sure.
Doesn't apply to sixplex, but.
Greater than sixty.
I like that. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
I know it's still a challenging thing to bring into clear and objective, but I, I think I would like to see, I think to uh, Commissioner Carlson's uh, comment earlier, this is somebody's legacy and and something I would like to uphold the spirit of if we have no other reason not to.
Um, and and did you throw out a number that you feel like is the appropriate threshold?
Well, I would, I would say a, a three-story building, typically you want to try to get like ten units, right? So I did maybe anything over, in my opinion, anything over thirty units would have to, I, that's what I would think.
Look pretty, I would, I would have thought lower.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, that's, to me, I don't know, with what I do, like, uh, you know. Uh, so ten units is like in what I do, ten units is like that pretty number for production. Like you, if you have ten units, you can really hit a production line of, of work and like move from floor to floor. Um, and uh, anything smaller than that, then it's just real inefficient and whatnot. So uh, for a developer, you know, that like they want to try to get those ten units a floor. I, I don't know, that's just where my.
No, I'm, I'm, I believe you're spot on accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More the better.
And and at ten units or, you know, something in that range too, you're getting to a big enough site that maybe you do have some flexibility about how you put the building on the property.
Yeah.
Because when you're down at the five to ten, you might be like, this is all that fits in this one spot, right? Um, so yeah, um, in Salem, we did some different love, design review levels for housing. This was twenty nineteen before um, the middle housing. But our breaking point, because we did quadplexes, was um, five, it was, it was five to twelve was like a, like a small multifamily. And then anything over twelve was sort of like a higher level of scrutiny because it could be more impactful.
It would have more impact, yeah.
Yeah, I could see that. Yeah. Yeah.
I like that too, because I know um, we are beholden to a lot more codes, uh, codes when it comes to middle housing. So would want to obviously steer clear of that, but I think middle housing technically ends at quadplexes, right?
Right, uh, yes, or attached townhouses could be more than four and cottage clusters could be more than.
Cottage clusters. Yeah.
Yeah, but those would be the smaller units. They're restricted by footprint size and by design and things like that. Okay, um. I'm gonna put like a twelve unit threshold in here. And we.
That's a good compromise.
We'll look at this again, but yeah.
Oh, we'll probably look at this several times.
Yeah. Okay, uh, sorry, going the wrong way. Um, lighting, so um, we, lighting was one that specifically came up because um, well, for when we've had some code enforcement issues with lighting um, on some commercial buildings and how they shine onto residential areas. We also um, have had like unclear lighting plans submitted with some projects and things. So um, I did some research looking at other codes to see if we could make it really numeric and really just like clear. Um, so proposing taking out um, the yellow um, highlighted less um, objective language and just um, having all projects submit a light, a site lighting plan and that it has standards. Um, and the, I, I researched um, all of our surrounding jurisdictions. So Oregon City, Westland, Lake Oswego, Milwaukee. Um, and kind of came up with a, a compromise of what everybody uses. And that's where I got the, an average of at least two foot candles across the exterior of the site. Minimum of one foot candle, maximum of four on the ground and a uniformity ratio of ten to one. Um, and uniformity ratio just has, it's the difference between the darkest spot on the property and the lightest spot on the property. And they range from like thirty to one, which I think you could get some really glary spots in that or some really dark spots for that. Um, versus like three to one, which were some like, those are really expensive um, lighting standards because you have to keep it so tight. Um, and I know we have people here who are more expert on lighting than I am, so I'll let you weigh in.
Well, I'd love it if we could decide what would be best and use the least amount of electricity and be
Yeah.
You know, like the win-win.
We can always, you know, we're, we are allowed to use language like um, low um, impact.
And we give them examples of what they should of what our standards are in the sense like two or three examples of this is what our recommendation is.
Yeah. Um, yes.
It's just like, you know, when, when PGE sent it, sent you a, a package with the new LED lights and wants you to use all of them and
Yeah.
You know, it, it cuts costs.
Examples of recommended.
Fixtures or lights or light bulbs or whatever, yeah.
Low efficiency, high efficiency.
You like that?
Lot, low electricity. I'll try not to write this.
Really pumping you to get information.
Okay.
Do they, when you get a contract and to build something, do they, I mean, do some of the?
This is exactly what we have, what's being explained here. Yeah, um, I think. Yeah, this, this was, what's being explained in this is exactly, I don't know if it's exactly, you know, these ratios and the amount of foot candles. I, I don't know what, each, probably each municipality has their own.
Yeah, they, they were all different.
Yeah, yeah. But it, like, what's being described here would absolutely give you the intent of the light fixtures and where they're at and how much light you're getting.
Okay.
Is there anything that's missing?
I'm concerned about light pollution.
Yeah.
About um, if, if like we got like a four-foot candle that's going into somebody's backyard, how can we like?
Like level of um, light off a property.
How can we buffer that against like?
Yeah, I, and I think I meant to put that, that at the property line, it can be no more than one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I meant to include that. Thank you.
I, I was just asking Andrew if they have like shields, so that the light will project forward and not back on the resident.
Yeah, we can require shields and um, they call it also um, ni- night sky. Wait, what's the standard now? Uh, dark sky.
Yeah, yeah.
Dark sky certified and shielding.
I'm curious, some of these newer fixtures, can they be dimmable?
They can be. Um, so that, we did just run into that with the um, code compliance issue. We were dealing with that the applicant said, okay, I installed all the dimmables. I'm gonna have a guy out there who can dim them at sunset. And then like it, there wasn't enough internet to do that to connect or something, you know, so.
What about oc, oc sensors?
Yeah.
Occupancy sensors.
Like that come on when you.
Yeah, so like they, if there's no one around, they're dim. But when you walk by them, they, they light up.
Yeah, um, just as far as requiring that though, I mean, I certain, I think we should permit them.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know if we require them per code.
They're rather expensive, I take it.
I don't, I don't know necessarily, but they may not be appropriate for all sites, right? But I, I can certainly put some language together and we can look at it.
Right.
Occupancy sensors, okay. Um, okay. Um, adjustments. So currently in the code, there is the ability with the design review to do minor a- adjustments within the design review. And I'd like to not do that anymore because this is the adjustment section of our code, which is currently a staff level review. And it's fairly um, inclusive of anything you'd want to be able to allow adjustment of at the staff level. And then anything beyond twenty percent of any of these standards or anything um, that's listed at the bottom that you can't use it for, those would come to the Planning Commission as a variance. So you currently can't use an adjustment for things like, you know, reducing required outdoor open space. Um, uh, the width of a flagpole for a flag lot, landscaping, increasing your fence height and a clear visionary. I don't think we'll allow that anywhere. I don't think you'd want to even get a variance for that. Um, but any of those things would come before the Planning Commission as a variance. And anything over twenty percent um, is considered a variance and would come to you.
On number one and adjustments, was the fire department's consult of were they asked about that? As I recall, a couple of times we've had flag lots and that's number one thing is, is we have fire access to get in if there's a problem.
Yeah, and and this is saying that you cannot use an adjustment to reduce it.
Okay.
So you have to hold the standard. So they haven't been consulted, but we're not recommending that they be changed, yeah.
Um, I'm remembering it was where the water intake is, the pump station there, where they were gonna do some things and there's houses that are right there. And we did compromise and request certain things. This is not what this is talking about, correct?
No, this would be if they were um.
You remember which, which?
I do, yeah. I, um, did we, um, it was sound. Yeah.
Sound for the temporary generator.
Right, the temporary generator. And we asked them to monitor that and provide a notice to our Public Works Director when they were going to be testing it and things like that. Um, yeah, so this would be more like um, like on the parking lot where they um, came in and the way the site is sized instead of five feet of landscaping on their um, eastern property line, they're doing like three point seven or something, so.
Gladstones.
For Gladstones, yeah. So that would fall, if, as long as it was no more than a twenty percent adjustment, they could apply for that adjustment with their design review and get that approved at a staff level.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I thought maybe we shouldn't have made the compromises we did for the water intake.
No, that, um, and, and I do believe that one had a conditional use permit associated with it because of the use. So that would still be coming to Planning Commission and still be able to have those conversations.
Okay.
Okay, so um, I think I'm getting general agreement that we can remove the automatic exceptions with design review and just rely on our adjustments. And then anything more could come to the Planning Commission.
Any objections to that? No, yeah.
Okay, um, and then I just wanted to, just a, a, as a reminder to go through some of the recent things that we approved. And um, this one I think is constructed and very close to certificate, certificate of occupancy, if not.
The one on Arlington, yeah.
Arlington Tap Room, yeah. So the building um, here. And then I, I put the site plan for each of these as well, just so we can remember. And and this one had landscaping too. So sorry for the double vision on that. It didn't line up exactly. But um, just to show what our standards will still be applying, which is still needing the um, landscaping um, percentage, you know, fifteen percent of the site. This has, I think, twenty-three percent landscaping, um, still requiring trash enclosures and bicycle parking and um, pedestrian access and um, some design standards with the building. Um, certain number of, of windows and doors and that sort of thing. Um, so definitely not something that you have to do tonight, but just thinking, and I think somebody brought it up, like thinking about past, I think that was Commissioner Wees, and I said, you're thinking like I am. What, what would we change here? Are we pretty okay with what we ended up with? Um, so that's Arlington Tap Room. Um, the next one is the ICSB. Um, so this building was already um, constructed and within three years of occupying, they needed more space. Um, so they added on. So up in the left is the um, full, full buildout, not just the original. Um, and then their site plan, we did have several conditions uh, because it was found to not be fully meeting our code. So these would still be things that would be conditioned, right? So staff will still be requiring these things to happen. Like you're not meeting your bicycle parking distance. You're not meeting your HVAC, your landscaping, whatever it is. We'll still be requiring those things to be revised before they can um, build the site out. Um, and then the other is the fire restoration. So this is right across the street here. And this was the original submittal, but we found that they didn't meet all of our standards. So they did need to add those higher clerestory windows above the roll-up garage doors. So um, the areas in red there were added. clerestory windows above the roll-up garage doors, so um, the areas in red there were added over the man doors and, and the vehicle doors um, to meet our code, and again, that was a recommendation in your staff report that was just found to not meet the code, so we'll still be doing those things, I'll still be looking at every single application and writing those staff reports, I'll just be then converting them into a notice of decision and requiring these conditions as we go. Um, and again, the site plan for that.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just, well, I guess just not really a question, just a, a note, 'cause I know, I'm just reminiscing on the ICSB, I know there were um, I don't wanna say issues, but um, uh, uh, between like buffering between um, commercial and residential, that was a a tough spot, and I, I, I think that would be, you know, if this continues to go more out of the planning commission's hands and more into um, straight staff decisions, that might be something worth looking into, um, and like seeing areas where we do have that. Um, uh, where, where commercial butts up against residential and what we can do to buffer that a little bit better.
A setback, um, for, that's very common to have a setback required when you have commercial abutting residential.
And we have a lot of that here in Gladstone.
Mm-hmm.
As the planning commissions back then just didn't have the vision, I guess. Um, yeah, it is crazy.
And then the, the site plan for a fire restoration, and the building in the lighter purple color was proposed, um, but they didn't have the pedestrian walkway, that's the darker purple color, and then the landscaping along the front of the property. Um, they had proposed a full curb cut all the way along the front of the property, and we were able to say, no, I think you can put some landscaping in there, we can figure this out. Um, so, still be looking at that. Um, that is it, that is all I put together for this evening.
That's enough.
I've gotten a lot of great feedback. Um, so, timing wise, you know, I'm, I'm not in a rush to get these code sections forward, um, because I feel like there's enough in the code that I could review and approve a design review if it came in, but like specifically anything that we're adding, as far as like a setback between commercial and residential, or the light um, shielding and um, things like that, I, I think those will be helpful ads, and so that'll be nice when they are in there, but if, if, if you are all ready for us to come forward with a public hearing um, with language put together, we can definitely do that. I have noticed DLCD in case we're ready to do that in June, and we can have another long discussion like this, eh, even during that time, and just like we did on the town center where you all made a, a change to the boundary, and then we just made sure it was clear to the city council that that had happened, so that um, they saw the change, we can make changes to language even if it's coming to you in public hearing.
Uh, also, uh, would it be possible, since I know that this is um, happening now, it was put into place January one, um, if maybe we could utilize our monthly planning reports every month?
Yes.
Where if there are some interesting ones to call out, where, where it would have originally been seen by us, but it's now at a staff level?
Yes.
Call that out and kind of track those.
That, that is a great idea.
Yes.
Add a section for.
At least for beginning of this process.
Yeah, there, there's that administrative reviews section on the um, just numbered table, so I'll add a um, a co- you know, an area where I can describe it, just like we describe building permits and like say what we did, yeah, definitely.
So I have a, one more question on this too, and uh, it's an education one again, um, I was thinking, so we're now designated a tree city and, and light pollution came up, and as I was kind of thinking about this and just the future, um, knowing that the price of water continues to increase and usage continues to increase, and just even, you know, looking at the landscaping requirements, is this appropriate to like, start to put some guidance in there around? If there is landscaping, it's, it's um, drought tolerant landscaping. Uh, if there's irrigation systems, they're, you know, they're, they're up to par as far as no low waste um, or something, and then also too, it's, it's just even with the landscaping requirements too, thinking about like, asking that um, plants that are native to the Pacific Northwest are priority or something, is this appro- is that appropriate in here?
Yes, we could definitely do that, I think we have a little bit of that language in already, um, and that is typically what we see, 'cause I think when um, these sites are getting designed, um, they're putting in those plans because they're hardier to our climate. Um, but we can definitely codify that, um, plants native to Pacific Northwest.
And especially about the irrigation, 'cause now they have various, you know, precise timers that for ten minutes, they're on at four thirty in the morning.
My homeland reads the weather report and doesn't turn it on if it's gonna rain.
And if we're gonna bother to invest in, in nice landscaping, you certainly don't wanna tell shrivel up and die.
Yeah.
So, um, unless you're gonna be out there watering it yourself, so.
Okay. Landscaping.
I think, um, and I don't know how all of you feel, I don't know that, I think we still have some more review of things to go over with. I don't know that we're ready to totally do anything in June, what does the commission feel?
I'm very hesitant to move forward.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Um, I'd have to defer to.
So you, we're still a work in progress, okay? Same. What about you?
Yep, I'm willing to talk about it more.
Okay, Commissioner Wies?
Um, are we asking if we wanna see new verbiage next time we meet, or if we wanna discuss more next time we meet?
I think more.
Okay, I guess the differentiation is.
That's a good question.
How much, how much work do we want staff to do? Do we review the same PowerPoint deck again next time, or do they bring?
I, I would propose, because of already started drafting, well, let me actually speak to our, um. Like, I don't want, I'm hesitant to mess with any of the council schedules, is my.
Correct.
My, I understand, um, so I notify Jackie when I think something's coming, but things being removed is easier than things being added, so i- if we remove from July council, we just might not get August, 'cause I think they don't meet some of August or something, right?
We just don't have a second. We don't have a, a, a date deadline or anything at this.
No, like I said, we'll just apply state, we're not under any um, you, you know, review or anything, we just have to apply state law directly until we do adopt our code section.
Okay.
Um, so, so as to not put together the same slideshow, but also to build on work I've already started, I've already pulled a lot of those code chapters and started meddling, like the lighting standards I showed you is from the actual chapter that I've started updating.
Okay.
So I could take this evening's comments and put it into code, and you guys could be reviewing actual proposed changes, and then we could talk about it packet-wise, that way maybe we're not even really using a slideshow, we're more just like talking about a packet.
Okay.
'Cause Tammy was wanting a bigger packet, so we'll just try to put that together.
Tammy. Okay. Um, no, I, I, that sounds good, does that sound all right with you, Jennifer?
Yeah, no, that sounds great, I was thinking, you know, we could, we could um, go forward with this, like we do any sort of annual plan, right, put it together in an agenda, prioritize what we think needs to be prioritized, and then start chipping away as we can, and in the meantime, we can talk through in like the monthly reports and figure out what, you know, that kinda, I think that'll help uh, illuminate uh, what needs to be prioritized.
Yeah, I, in the monthly report, I mean, I don't think I'm limited, I could probably include site plans and things that are submitted, so that you can see what we looked at and things and, and what the decisions were. Um, also, um, I, I just happen to have a call with our DLCD representative today with, with city administrator Bets, and um, we talked about public notice, because I know for the city, it's expensive and the timelines can be kind of tricky with getting things in newspapers and.
Sometimes it's a little tight, it's not.
Well, and, and we post in like the Lake Oswego review, and I just don't know how broadly our residents are, are using that, um.
They're not.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's just like checking a box that, so I brought that up to our DLCD rep, and she said some communities are using um, the internet to do that, but you have to have like a designated page, which we have a planning and building page. It might just be a matter of us needing to update certain, such like, here's what we're reviewing right now, and then maybe we don't even need to do newspaper notice, so that might be nice.
Would it be appropriate if some of those notices were put into our water bills?
That, just the timing is so tricky, you know, um, because your water bill comes out, but it's like the deadline to put things in is like three weeks prior to that, and like if we don't have a complete review, we might not.
And we put it in our own city newsletter.
That, that would be the other thing with the newsletter, it just depends on when it's coming.
People don't read them though.
Well, yeah, and we, we did do.
Yeah.
Well, we're on the planning commission, go figure.
Yeah, we did, we did do like the, the town center project and the bigger like long-range planning projects we put in there. Um, yeah, I could talk to city staff about if, if it'd be appropriate for me to give like even like a quarterly like planning corner, here's what's happening or something like that, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions, your staff, so you would make the decisions, is it something that you talk with Jackie about before they're finalized?
Um, if it's controversial at all, certainly, I mean, I, I meet with Jackie at least once a month when I'm here for department head meeting, and I always report back on any like, um, potentially, you know, i- I would definitely check with her if there's anything out of the ordinary, but I'd also give her a heads up that I wouldn't make a decision without Jackie knowing I'm making that decision.
Okay.
I don't always like run through every minute detail with her, but um, like.
You know, you know what I'm asking, it's like, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you know something's coming down the turnpike.
Yeah.
You might even wanna give us, oh, by the way, I wanna let you know this is upcoming.
Definitely, I, I can include like whether I've deemed something complete, you know, 'cause then we're in noticing periods and things like that. Um, Tammy sees everything, because she keeps the city's record, so at any time, um.
She knows where all the dead bodies are.
Yeah, anytime we're making a decision, even on like a lot line adjustment, that's going to Tammy and to Haley, our um, administrative assistant to mail those out. Um, yeah, there's, there's a lot of communication about everything that happens. In those department head meetings too, I have the opportunity to say, you know, I spoke with somebody about wanting to um, you know, do a floodplain development, and, and it, it doesn't even have to be like an application that's been submitted, but just so that everybody knows those are coming.
Yeah.
Um, and I coordinate with the public works director at that point too, um, but yeah, there, there's a lot of communication.
Good, because I've been volunteering on this commission three or four planners back.
Yeah.
And the communication was lacking, yeah.
Yes.
I'm.
So much better with you, thank you.
I'm very cautious about, you know, protecting Gladstone, but also protecting myself from making any decisions that are gonna come back and come to your city council and like.
We're all here for the same reason.
Yeah.
For the beautification, the, you know, for the, for the vision of the future for the city, I mean, we're a team. We have to know what's going on.
Definitely, yeah, and I mean, that's a big part of why I got into planning.
That's why it's always such a privilege to serve with these guys, 'cause I think I may have, have it dialed in, and then I listen to somebody else's perspective, and it's like, I mean, this commission is, I've served with lots of others in this capacity, and this is, gets me jazzed up. I like the input, and everyone has something extremely valuable to add, so.
Okay, well, I think I, I have a um, good path forward for what, to bring you all for your June packet, and um, we'll continue talking about this, and um, we'll plan not to schedule a public hearing for June, so potentially July. Um, I don't know if there'll be vacations and things like that, but we'll certainly sort that out, we need to make sure we have a quorum, and because this issue is so um, you know, of interest to everybody here, um, we'll just take that into consideration and talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Tammy, do we have any business uh, for the planning commission? Does anybody wanna speak?
I have not received any requests.
Okay, then business from the planning commission, I'll start with you, Commissioner Brennan.
Uh, no business, but um, I do appreciate the discussion tonight, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Carlson?
No business.
Commissioner Volbada?
Uh, yes, um, just to kind of get, get the conversation going, um, so I will, I will be here June and July, um, August will be a question mark on whether or not um, maternity leave will be starting there, so I will stay in uh, communication with you, um. If he has not graced us with his presence, then I may join virtually, um, but we will be in communication, and uh, while I'm absent, you will be co-chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wies?
Um, just would, would like to start the ball rolling on thinking about how we may reduce barriers to the appeals process. As part of what we've talked about today, we've made, we're notifying fewer folks of changes in their neighborhood, and we've eliminated an outlet for some of them to come to us during a public hearing or a design review. Um, and so I would like to think through how we might reduce the barriers, because
That's excellent.
in that situation.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna need to have something for them, so they feel that they've been heard.
Yeah.
And that we addressed the issue seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for that. Thank you, great input. Commissioner Langston?
Uh, I have none to that, thank you.
Uh, I don't believe I have any either, other than it is an honor and a privilege to serve with you guys. Uh, we always have highly productive meetings, uh, when you think back in the last couple of years, we've had some major accomplishments. And it's just, I look forward to these meetings to work with you, thank you.
Uh, if I could circle back, I have a question for Ms. Austin. You mentioned the uh, uh, childcare center on Webster Road, it seems to me at a meeting here in the recent past, they talked about being going by now, and I, what, what is the uh?
I, I think it's due to financing, I think they have several improvements that they're trying to make to the interior and exterior of the site, and they're um, the city actually just put in a letter of support to the state to provide some state funding for that facility, um, but it was upwards of a million, mil- one point four million dollars or something they were looking for, for that. Yeah, um, so city of Gladstone, in trying to do some small part, did waive the um, eighteen hundred dollar pre-application fee for them, so we'll be holding a pre-application and not charging any money for that, but um, yeah, I think it's a, it's a funding thing.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for waiving that, it's a vital, it's a vital thing for the community. And we're so underpopulated with childcare right now, so that was nice, thank you, city. Um, on that note, if there isn't anything else.
I, I do have one more, just shout out to your Commissioner Volbada for being named top forty, under forty, I don't know if everybody heard that. She's being honored this summer, a huge deal.
So proud of you. So very proud of you, and so happy that you're one of us.
Yeah, so I, I don't think everybody heard that.
The July issue of the Portland Business Journal, keep an eye out.
That's quite an accomplishment at your young age.
It really is.
Yeah.
With a couple of years spare.
Yay! On that note, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. I'll second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Smith, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Commissioner Wies?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-eight.